All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, March 24th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yeah, yes.
Martin?
Here.
Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum.
I move to excuse Pollocka.
Support. Councilman Pollocka is under the weather and notified us a couple of hours ago that he wouldn't be able to make it tonight. So Councilman Pollocka is excused. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Your Honor, I'd like to add regular agenda item D, consideration of the Miller-Canfield engagement.
I support.
All right. We'll add Miller-Canfield engagement letter as item 8D. Anything else? A motion would be in order.
I move to approve the agenda with the amendment.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. All right, moving on to presentations, we have three presentations this evening, although I don't know if the first one has a representative. Ferndale Public Schools, is there someone from the public schools? I didn't think I saw someone, so we'll move on to our second presentation, which is the Ferndale Public Library's Year in Review, and I know there's lots of good folks here from the library, and the Chair, Pat Dengate, Executive Director, Jessica, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Dengate, yes, President of the Board of Trustees for the Ferndale Public Library, here with Jessica Kaiser, our Director, and some of the other trustees here are Frank Castrenova, Adrian Gilmore, and Judeen Bartos. So we're going to run through some slides just as an overview for the past year.
Thank you.
I want to start by saying that I am just so proud of the staff we have at the library, from the most experienced librarian to the most recently hired page. They're just really outstanding folks who really work hard and use a lot of creativity in helping the patrons and serving the people of Ferndale. I also want to thank all the volunteers who work at the library. The Friends Group, Friends of the Ferndale Library are just a great group of people, and I would encourage anybody watching this or listening tonight to consider joining the Friends because they really do add a lot to furthering the mission of the library, and they raise an awful lot of money for us as well, as you'll see, so if we could...
And Patrick, not only do I agree with you, but I'd add, I appreciate the members of the Board of Trustees as well. You guys don't get paid for this, and you put a lot of hours in to make sure our library functions properly, so thank you to the Board as well.
Well, we're happy to do it. Thank you. There we go. Well, let me start sort of with the big picture. Libraries in the 21st century, there are still a few folks out there who have this notion that perhaps the library as we've known it has become obsolete, and there's really no need for it anymore, but in fact, public libraries provide a lot of important services and meet a lot of needs of the public. Knowledgeable librarians for help in getting information, access to books and movies without having to buy them, free informational programming classes, fun and educational opportunities for adults and children, exposure to art and music, access to computers and the Internet, career job resources, free databases for research, and quiet study areas. If you don't want to go to the noisy coffee shop to study, there's the library. Some highlights from our programming of the past year, starting with youth programming. There were special storytimes and book clubs for every age group, Dig Into Reading, Summer Reading Challenge, featured a Super Science Day with Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum folks on site, an ice cream social with Tree Dreams, live musical performances by grateful dads, journaling with arts and scraps, live animal encounters, preschool yoga, a special day of games, and a Waldorf Story Hour. There was a Wizard of Oz Halloween Party after hours, and we saw increased collaboration with Ferndale Schools, including our first Fernberry Award Ceremony. Adult programming, quite a lot of adult programs took place at the library. We had the Metro Times Blowout, we were a site for that festival. It's been around about 15 years now, I think. In three nights at the library, nine bands performed. First Stop Fridays drew hundreds of attendees. There was a summer concert series. Ferndale Reads engaged the community with Kurt Vonnegut's classic Slaughterhouse Five. We exhibited the work of 36 artists with exhibitions and loans throughout the year in the library. There was a monthly coffee hour with elected state representatives. We had yoga classes there. There was a monthly, well, there were a number of monthly book clubs and a book party. Here are just a few snapshots from some of these events. Get Caught Reading was part of the Ferndale Reads up in the upper left-hand corner. The upper right-hand corner is one of the bands at the Blowout. Lower right-hand corner is from the summer concert series, Gary Andrews from the Historical Society on the lower left giving a lecture, and then a couple of large photographs in our atrium from Marco Mancinelli. I'm going to turn it over to Jessica at this point, and she can go through some other highlights.
All right. Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Mayor Coulter. Hi. Thank you for saying that about the library board, because it's true, they are a wonderful group of people, and they dedicate a lot of time and energy to our library, so we couldn't do all these great things without them, and sometimes they're the unsung heroes of the library, so I appreciate you saying that. Some points of pride from 2013 for us. We contracted with a firm to aid in the recovery of materials and fines, and when we get into some statistics, you'll see that we're seeing a great result from that. We received a grant to hire a fundraising consultant, that was from the Ferndale Community Foundation. We added 6,257 new items to our collection. We had a Rock for Books concert fundraiser at The Loving Touch. We were featured on The Bright Side, which is a TV show out of Lansing about the changing role of libraries and communities. Help from our friends, the library friends really do enable us to do so much in the library. They gave us donations totaling $19,055 in 2013. That's including a donation to purchase new early literacy stations in the youth area, which have age-appropriate games and computers with nice big touchscreens so that kids can do different adaptive learning in the library. June Axel Rad is our bookstore coordinator for the Friends, and she was recognized as a distinguished volunteer at the National Philanthropy Day Dinner in Detroit this year. We are very proud to have her honored in that way. Then getting into some of the numbers, what our expenses break down as, as you'll see, 45% is staff expenses, 30% is bond payments, 7% is the new materials, 8% is operations, and the rest is the other miscellaneous things that go into running the library. Revenue sources have changed quite a bit over the last decade or so. Milages have played an increasing role in library funding throughout the state, which is interesting to me. I think it reflects the overall statewide funding trend for municipalities of having to rely more on local revenue. Our state aid has dropped significantly. We used to have about 5.8% was our state aid a few years ago, now it's down to 1.5% for our overall revenue. And the other is penal fines, any other fines and fees, overdue fees that we collect, and any other revenue, fundraising. Just to show how we stack up with our hours of operation, we match Royal Oak Public Library for hours open every week to the public. We're open 56 hours. As you can see, other libraries in the area are open significantly less hours every week. So we're really trying to maintain that gold standard of library operations, and we're busy every day. We're averaging about 700 people through the door every day, so we feel that it's important and we want to stay open. You can see our library visits have really jumped just in the last year. We're up to about 170,000 visits is what we tracked with our door counter last year.
What do you make of that?
Well, we, part of it is our mechanism for counting. We really started counting people coming in, even if they were coming in just for programming and for meetings in the community area of the library, as opposed to just people coming into the more standard, traditional part of the library. And then also, I think, just an awareness of our programs, we've really, as part of our strategic planning, we've really focused on other ways to reach out to the community and let people know what's going on. We have some statistics from our programming, and we actually didn't offer very many more programs in the last year, but the attendance to the programs, the participation, really went through the roof. So people are finding out more about what we're doing. I think it's through word of mouth, through our social media, and through our more traditional media, and the programming that we are doing, I think, is really resonating with people. And you'll see our fines and materials recovered also went up, and we attribute that in large part to the agency that we contracted with. So yes, programs for children went up a little bit. We went from 156 to 169, this is from 2012 to 2013. Adults, 148 in 2012 and 150 in 2013. But then, if you look at the participation, we had about 4,100 people in 2012, 7,176 people participated in 2013. Our total collection also went up by about 4,000 items total. So our goals and challenges for 2014. We want to expand our partnership with the Ferndale Schools, partner with the Downtown Development Authority, advocate for the library as an anchor in the downtown, continue to grow our participation in programs and expand our programming for teens, reach more residents who are currently non-users. We're working on completing our fundraising plan, increasing private and corporate donations to avoid further use of our reserve funds to meet costs and maintain our current hours. And then just to end with a quote that I think really encompasses the role of the Ferndale Library, this is from Caitlin Moran, she's a very prolific writer and columnist. She says, "A library in the middle of a community is a cross between an emergency exit, a life raft, and a festival. They are cathedrals of the mind, hospitals of the soul, theme parks of the imagination. On a cold rainy island, they are the only sheltered public spaces where you are not a consumer but a citizen instead."
Great. Very nice.
And so to keep up to date, we are on all of the different social media platforms. We keep our website updated daily. We have a blog, we just started an email newsletter, and the Ferndale Friends also have their website. And then in closing, we just kicked off our Ferndale Reads program for 2014, and I brought copies of the book tonight, if anybody needs a copy. We kicked off with a scavenger hunt, and some brave souls were wandering around downtown following the clues on Saturday. Councilman Pollocka was one of them, so we hope that that's not why he's big now.
How he's got pneumonia.
So I'd be happy to share a book with anybody.
That'd be great, yes. And does Council have any questions of Jessica? Thank you very much for that presentation, that was very well done and very helpful. Any questions of Jessica?
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, our next presentation would be a presentation by the Ferndale Downtown Development Authority, and I think I, yes, I did see Christina come in. Good evening.
Thank you, and hopefully not another snowy day coming up, but trying to wish it away. I do want to first say thanks to Ferndale Public Library for putting on a great Ferndale Reads program. It was fun participating, and we look forward to wrapping up that event on May 22nd at the Rust Belt Market with them and just supporting future programming through our district, so. Coming up for us, though, we have FerNet, which is our business networking program. It's on Wednesday at 9:00 AM. It will be held at Go Comedy, and actually, the title of this one is Improve with Improv. So you'll be able to improve your business through improvisation, and showing you some useful tips of improv in putting it into customer service. So we're really looking forward to it. We're actually looking forward to it for ourselves even, but I think for businesses, this will be a great little lesson and hopefully some fun, too. On Monday, next Monday, the 31st, it is our appreciation awards. We'll be holding those at Tree Dreams at 6:00 PM, so we obviously invite all council members to come on out, and anyone else who would like to just come out and support those who made great accomplishments this year. We also wanted to make sure to announce that tomorrow morning, starting at 7:00 AM, sorry, I got a little weird glare on this thing, at 7:00 AM until 1:00 PM, West Nine Mile Street will be closed for a filming, so a nice little film coming in through our town, so it'll be closed between Woodward and Allen, so you'll still be able to get around and get to parking and so forth, but the street will be closed during that time.
What time, again, I'm sorry?
7:00 AM until 1:00 PM.
When?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yes. And the movie that they're shooting for is Dial a Prayer, and it's starring Brittany Snow, William H. Macy, who I love, and Andy McDowell, so maybe we'll see some stars, too, I don't know. So we shall see. Also, we will be hosting and partnering with, obviously, the city and also the community foundation on Clean the Ferndale Up on May 17th in the morning, which is actually going to prelude our National Main Street Conference Welcome Reception Party that we are hosting. We are very honored to put on this party, and Clean the Ferndale Up will help us kind of dust off those last few things before all the visitors come in. But those who are not familiar with the National Main Street Center and the conference that is coming in, there will be over 1,000 attendees coming in from across the United States. These are people who are economic development folks, there are also city officials like yourselves, there are also volunteers like our community and our citizens and our business owners. So they're all of our like minds, who are looking for great examples as to how to manage and run a downtown, and we're so honored that they're finally coming to the metro Detroit area, they're coming to downtown Detroit to host the cold conference, and we are their first stop after they check in and check in their bags from getting off the airport to come up to our downtown and really get to enjoy what metro Detroit has to offer in downtown Ferndale. So we'll be working with many of our businesses to get them to participate, obviously, in some fashion throughout the week of the conference, and especially on that day. And we're also looking for volunteers to help on May 17th for the reception party. So if you are interested in helping out, we're looking for ambassadors, people who can speak great things about downtown Ferndale and the city as a whole, to come out and help out. The party is from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, but we're going to need people earlier in the day for setup, as well as throughout the reception party itself. So you can call our office or email us as well, and you can talk to myself, Chris, or Cindy to help out with that. Our number is (248) 546-1632, or you could just email us at info@downtownferndale.com. And there's a great little volunteer online service that we're using, but we'll send you the link for it so you can easily find it. It's through volunteerspot.com, so. That is it. We're really looking forward to having some sunshine and some warmer weather this coming weekend, and for those of you who have been looking around and going, ooh, things are a little grungy, you know, because the snow's melting, and now we've got nothing left but, you know, the little bits, piles that are left. Once we really get some warmer weather this coming weekend, I think we'll see our crews from, like, Worry Free Land Staping out there going full force and getting things cleaned up. We've got a lot of work to do before May 17th as well, so in W I O two. Thank you.
All right. Any questions of Christina?
I don't know if it's for Christina or for the city, but have we posted previously that West Nine was going to be closed for six hours tomorrow? I think it's wonderful we're going to be in the movie.
Michael Larry, I know, sent out a notice to the businesses late last week, and...
I believe so, I'll double check.
Okay, I just, I didn't hear, so...
And then I know we also sent out an e-blast to our businesses to let them know, for sure.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Good, thanks, Christina.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Very good. Moving on to the agenda, then, we have two public hearings this evening. We'll start with public hearing A, Department of Natural Resources grant applications and consideration of resolutions of support. And Jill, I think I saw you, and are you going to introduce that? Just kind of give us an overview, and we'll open it up for questions from the audience.
All right. We're currently preparing two Department of Natural Resources trust fund and grant applications for park improvements, both at Martin Road Park and Harding, one application for each. Each application proposes installation of a new play structure and a permanent walking path at each park. In the past several years, each park has had a play structure that has been removed due to it being outdated and unsafe, and it has yet to be replaced, as well as each park currently has some accessible features, but they lack the access routes to those features. The permanent walking path would provide access for people of all ages and abilities to get to our park amenities, such as ball fields, our restrooms, things like that. So as part of the public hearing, we are also requesting Council pass two resolutions this evening to support the submission of each application, and to commit to a local match of 50%, which is a combined total of $137,500 total for each application.
Okay, so now I want to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address Council this evening on this item.
Good evening. Good evening. David Lutz, (524) Gardendale, here as a citizen and as an official member of the Dale's Community Group, the Physical Improvements Committee. Thank you, Jill. We've been working diligently together with Jill and Lloyd for some of the parks in our specific southwest quadrant of the city, and hoping for some improvements in our parks. And I thank you for all your efforts in putting the grants together. I guess my main question that I have is how these two parks, both Martin and Harding, were selected for the first round of grant applications, and before you answer that, I just wanted to share a few items that came up from both the Blue Ribbon Parks Commission survey, as well as the 2009 survey that was completed to complete the current master plan for the Parks and Rec. Of the respondents that responded to the Blue Ribbon Committee, over 48% were from the southwest Ferndale quadrant, and in 2009, 55% of the respondents to that park survey were from the southwest quadrant. Both Garbutt and Oppenheim Parks, which are in the southwest quadrant, are some of the most used parks in the city based on those surveys, and they have among the lowest three user satisfaction rates of all the parks, while Martin Road had the highest user satisfaction rate in the 2009 study. Martin Road Park is, they all have needs for play structures and equipment, and I just, I was, both Martin Road and Harding are some of the highest, are the most acreage for the parks. So I'm just wondering, is it, if it's a dollar value or the biggest bang for your buck at the current stage, I would argue that the parks that have maybe the highest need and the lowest user satisfaction rate might go a lot better than spending dollars on maybe the largest parks, which already have the highest user satisfaction rate, so, thank you.
And, yeah, I was going to say, Lloyd, you co-chaired the panel, the Parks Panel last year, and you want to address the discussion criteria?
Right, I'd like to provide a little more information that possibly some of the public isn't aware of. As part of the budget that we presented to Council, we are proposing funding, $125,000 worth of Parks improvements in the next budget year. The work that is proposed for Martin and Harding is for 2016, although we're going to apply for it next year, it wouldn't actually be awarded and constructed to 2016. So with that and the other work that we talked to Council about along Eight Mile during the visioning session, you know, that will come together for Garbutt Park in that, and we have proposed to remove and replace that play structure, and that's, and there's other improvements that will be made to the general area. So I'm not sure if Mr. Lewis is aware of that, but I'd like to provide that information to Council.
Thanks, Lloyd. Is there anyone else that would like to address Council? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will open it up to Council's comments and questions at this point.
I would just like to respond to David's comments, and I think we are moving in the right direction for our parks, but I am also frustrated because it's going to take a long time to raise the revenue in order to pay for them, because we've had some financial challenges in the last year or the past few years. And so when I look at the Parks Improvement Master's Plan from 2009, and if we apply and we put in the CIP for new park equipment from 2009 to 2016, it's a really long time to plan for and fund park equipment. So that's where the frustration, even though we're on the right track, so I just wanted to share that. And so while David is questioning the order of replacing our park equipment, I do think these grants are, we're getting two-for-one ADA compliant pathways, as well as park equipment replacement. I would encourage Council and staff to consider the smaller, lower-cost things that we could be doing in our parks, not just fix what's there, but what are the low-cost types of play things, and I'm not an expert on any of this, but I've had some really good conversations with people in my neighborhood about what are really low-cost items we could be doing in the parks to entice families to come bring their children there outside of the park equipment. So I'm not sure that came out of the Blue Ribbon Parks Commission, I think that was more high-level stuff than the, you know, low-hanging fruit, new ways that kids play. I don't have children, so, but I know that there are different ways kids play today, so that's all I wanted to say.
I guess to that, the Parks, the Blue Ribbon Task Force on Parks did come up with other recommendations that we will be implementing. I don't know if they address your other ways to play scenario, but a dog park, for instance, a disc golf course in one of the parks, other playscapes that will be added, and if I'm hearing Lloyd correct, maybe even in Garbutt sooner than these, this year as opposed to next. So there's a series of things that are going to start happening in our parks. The challenge, of course, and I said this when we created the Blue Ribbon Committee, is that we really can't afford to be dipping into our fund balance to pay for these things. So if we can figure out how to pay for it out of existing budgets, or out of grants, or out of sponsorships, then that's what we have to do. So we are constrained by finances, no question, but...
Right, I agree. It's just frustrating that it's... It's just frustrating that it's taking this long, and we have to go after grant opportunities to address each park.
April. Oh, I'm sorry. She hit her hand up first.
I just want to offer a couple of items as well, that I know that Jill Manchek and Lloyd Currente have been working together for the last year to look at exactly those things, and that these two grant opportunities are just one of, one part of starting to really revitalize our parks. I think both of them are very committed, and we're really excited because Councilmember Pollock, as well, agrees to staff be the liaison for the Parks and Rec Commission that has been kind of stagnant for a while. And I know you'll actually see something on the agenda tonight to update their ordinance as well. So I do think that you're going to start to see a much greater participation in the parks, and we, I think Melanie, or Councilmember, Janice hit it on the head, and I think one of the things that Jill and Lloyd are going to be doing is seeing how we can budget for those little things, you know, positive maintenance, but also additional things that aren't really grant-worthy. These grants that they're applying for, they want them to be focused, and they want them to be larger, that include more than just play equipment, which is why they're doing the ADA accessibility in the trails. They want that feel for the parks. So, I do think that you're going to see, over the course of the next couple of years, quicker than I think that, than it sounds like, if you will.
Right.
But that is why they did go ahead and schedule Garbutt, because it was going to take about a year and a half by the time the grant comes through, and we didn't want Garbutt Park to wait that long. So, you will see some significant improvements over the course of the next couple of years. But it is true, we are constrained by price, or by funding, but we're working through that as much as we can.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're good now?
I'm good now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just on, you know, the issue of how long it's taken, I mean, I've said this before, but I'll reiterate, no department in City Hall took a bigger cut as a percentage of their budget than Parks and Rec. So, a lot of the things that in 2009 we were dreaming of got shelved because, again, of the financial considerations, but we're beginning now to address some longstanding issues, which I know you know, because you were on council then.
And I'm supportive of them, just frustrated it's taking a long time.
A motion would be in order.
I move to adopt a resolution supporting a Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Park Improvements at Martin Road Park. Do we need to do both of them? Or one at a time?
One at a time? Or can we do a both at once?
One at a time, please.
One at a time, please. Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Any other discussion on the Martin Road Park improvement? Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Is there another motion?
I move to adopt a resolution supporting a Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Park Improvements at Harding Park.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Any discussion further on that item? All right. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is also adopted. Now, we have scheduled a second public hearing, and this is a public hearing on the 2014 Class C liquor license renewals and consideration to objections on the grounds of noncompliance. Dan, are you going to introduce that item?
I'd be happy to introduce that item before you open the public hearing.
Yes.
This is council's opportunity annually to consider whether it wishes to lodge any objections with respect to its Class C license establishments with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. There are five Class C license establishments that have been notified for possible public hearings this evening. Buffalo Wild Wings, Blue Nile, Como's Restaurant, Marias, excuse me, and Posh Entertainment doing business as Eden nightclub. Notices with respect to delinquencies and obligations owing to the city have been communicated to those license establishments. Public hearing would be appropriate to open. After the close of the public hearing, I will ask for brief testimony from the city manager as it relates to the outstanding obligations, and then council may wish to consider resolutions objecting to the Class C renewal.
Very good. Thank you for that introduction. I will open it up to see if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council on this item, including any of the aforementioned business owners that may want to address, that may or may not be here to address their specific circumstances. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and Dan, I'm going to put it back to you if you'd like to...
Very briefly, Your Honor. In the past, I've gone Class C establishment by Class C establishment, but in the interest of brevity, Ms. Lynch, are you familiar generally with the communication prepared by the city clerk with respect to the outstanding obligations of the particular establishments, Buffalo Wild Wings, Blue Nile, Como's Restaurant, and Marias, and Eden nightclub?
Yes, I am.
And have you had an opportunity to review the outstanding delinquencies and obligations owing to the city of Ferndale from those aforementioned establishments?
Yes, I have.
And are those delinquencies and obligations still owing to the best of your knowledge and information?
To the best of my knowledge at this time, yes.
Your Honor, I would also indicate that I have provided notice to all of those establishments by certified mail with respect to the public hearing and their opportunity to weigh in with council this evening. At this time, it would be appropriate for council to consider resolutions that are at the table objecting to the renewal of the five Class C license establishments for the 2014 year. As council will recall, the city council had an opportunity to weigh in on this issue through the end of March. The license would not actually, the new license starts May 1st. So, historically, to the extent that a licensed establishment has cured or addressed the particular delinquency prior to the first day of May, council has considered rescinding its objection to renewal, and it can do so at any time up to May 1st.
So we have the opportunity at the meetings in April to rescind any that are addressed.
That's correct.
Could you also just speak briefly about what the resolution that council adopted on this is, and what the categories of concern, possible concerns are that are addressed in that resolution?
Well, I can read it. It's a pretty long resolution, Your Honor.
No, I'm just sort of...
But certainly, all of the particular license establishments have outstanding delinquencies either of real estate taxes owing to the city of Ferndale, or outstanding water and sewer bills owing to the city of Ferndale. Now, the city of Ferndale has adopted resolutions identifying a number of criteria that it looks to with respect to its consideration whether to object or not to renewal. But those are the particular categories that the establishments identified are in default on to the city at this time.
Good. And this is a policy that was first adopted, if I understand it, in 1968, and that we've re-adopted each year since then. This is a longstanding policy of the city.
It is. It has been amended on a number of occasions.
Sure. Okay.
Through the chair, Dan, these, well, I see three of them right now are repeat offenders. Every year I'm up here, and they're the same ones.
But to that point, they typically address it...
Right. They have. That's why they're still in business. But what I'm saying is, do we offer payment plans for some of these, April?
Well, I believe the ones that are in taxes belong to the county at this point, so a lot of times the county will do that.
But I see two here for, whoa, I see one here for real property taxes, and one for water and sewer bills also.
Again, when they're turned over to the county, because the county is the one that is responsible for maintaining that.
Okay. It'll be up to their policy, whatever that be.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's all I have there.
May I ask if we heard from any of these since we sent notice, or anything else? Because some of these are quite sizable.
Okay, good. Councilwoman Martin, there were additional licensed establishments that letters and notices went to. We did receive correspondence, and frankly, those other establishments did cure their deficiencies. The five establishments that are before you this evening, I have not heard any, had any contact from them. April, have you?
No.
Were any, besides letters, did the city make any phone calls to any of these owners?
No.
We can follow up.
I think it would be helpful, and maybe through the Downtown Development Authority, to be a liaison.
I know these were certified letters, but I think that's a point well-taken, that we, you know, these are all, you know, longstanding businesses, and a phone call or something would also be...
And there are some repeat offenders here, so...
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We will take care of that.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Motion would be in order.
I move to adopt a resolution objecting to the renewal of the Class C liquor license issued to, the five listed on the request for action. Licensee name and doing business as common, as submitted.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Lennon and supported by Piana. Any further discussion, comments, questions on that item? All right. Hearing none. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call the audience. Call the audience, of course, is 30 minutes now, and more time if needed at the end of the meeting. For those who are here to come up and address council on any issue that they like that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to speak to that when we get there. Three minutes. State your name and your address, if you're comfortable doing that, or sign your name and address in the back so we know who you are, and approach the podium, and three minutes is yours. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I think that might be the fastest that I ever remember that public hearing going. Kate Baker, 1615 Bowfield Street. And I am here tonight to give you all a heads up and a save-the-date note for the 6th, which is amazing to me, Annual Ferndare Free Clinic Dinner. It is coming up on Thursday, May the 8th, at 6:00. Actually, Dave Coulter, our honorable mayor, will be the master of ceremonies that evening. And Nancy Caffer, editorial columnist for the Detroit Free Press, will be our speaker that evening. Tickets are $40. That hasn't changed. And more information is available, and tickets are available, on our website, www.ferndare.org. And there's more information on our Facebook page as well. I hope I'll see you guys there.
Great. Good to see you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. Mayor Coulter?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your sincere attention. Last council meeting, you have my respect on that. Since April, Lynch had failed to respond to my request for board of review members' names in two and a half weeks. That raised a red flag to me. March 11th, I researched the board of review at the Oakland County Law Library. This is ordinance number 477, and it says, "Appointment of Board of Review and Their Duties." The city assessor, which would be Oakland County, city attorney, which would be Dan Chris, and three electors, who shall also be freeholders, residents. When I went to the board of review in 2012, there were only three people there. One was Oakland County, and obviously, two were freeholders. What I would like to know is why the city attorney was not at that meeting? Not necessarily tonight, but if you could respond in a letter?
Sure. Through the chair, please. But yeah, I mean, not everyone makes every meeting, but we can attempt to answer that for you.
And there was one other question about, in the rules of procedure, and I believe this is for city council, citizens' complaint policy involving city employees. That was adopted March 15th, 1993, as resolution number 105, page 75. If you could please get that to me in a letter, Ms. Lynch? And yes, you are entertaining. You asked me that earlier.
No. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will close the call to audience, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless someone on council removes one of the items from the consent agenda. Let me read them for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings held March 10th, 2014. B is the approval to utilize Abraham and Gaffney, PC, for the city of Ferndale's fiscal year ending 2014 audit for an amount not to exceed $30,450. Item C is the approval to authorize Plant Moran to create and establish a water and sewer rate modeling program for the city of Ferndale for an amount not to exceed $15,000. Item D is the approval of a request from the Ferndale DDA for a special event permit for Get Real Outdoor Movie Night at 6:30 on July 17th, August 21st, and September 18th, 2014. Item E is the approval of a request from the Ferndale DDA for a special event permit for Fido Does Ferndale, Thursday, October 16th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And finally, item F is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
It's moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Is there any discussion, either from council or from the audience? All right. Seeing none. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration to authorize the mayor and city manager to finalize and execute an LOI for Oakland housing site. And Derek Delacorte, our director of community and economic development, you're going to introduce that item?
I'd be glad to, mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here to discuss, or at least initially present, a project that staff has been working on for several months now. We were recently, or a few months ago, contacted by members of the Oakland Housing nonprofit organization. They're a nonprofit organization that does housing projects in southeast Michigan, and we had an initial conversation with them about potential sites within the city of Ferndale or the surrounding area to do a single-family new home construction project, or even potentially a renovation project. We did look at several sites throughout the city, including potential, well, shotgunning sites, basically, individual lots scattered throughout the city, and whether there was the ability to amass a critical level of those to do a project. After several conversations, we did take a look at the city's storage yard on the west side, directly adjacent to Royal Oak Township and abutting Republic. It's currently used for seasonal storage, some maintenance storage, leaf processing. So it does have some use, but we thought it was potentially, it's a seven-acre site, we thought the potential was there to take a look at it and see if all or a portion of it could be potentially used for a single-family housing development. Those conversations have continued. They've progressed. We do feel comfortable now that there is enough information that we've looked at to talk about a letter of intent, which is basically something similar to council's seen in the past. It's a kind of an exclusivity agreement to open up formal negotiations in a public process to discuss the potential development of the site. It doesn't bind us to approving any above-ground development. It creates a window of opportunity for us to look at that site with Oakland Housing, begin the process with the planning commission, start any environmental due diligence that may be necessary on the site, and do so under the agreed-upon terms of the letter. Again, it does not obligate Oakland Housing to purchase the site from us. It does not obligate us to give them anything at the end of the process. Only allows that window of exclusivity to begin the discussion. The letter of intent has been included in your packet. I will note, there was a typo, or one of the items on there was the due diligence timeframe. It should read 180 days. I think there's a couple of different numbers in there. What we're recommending is 180 days to take a look at it. We think that's reasonable with the amount of due diligence that needs to be done. Other than that, I'm going to turn it over right now and introduce Conrad Cole, who is representative of the Oakland Housing Board of Directors. And he's going to talk a little bit about who Oakland Housing is and what projects they've done in the past, and then we'll both be available to answer any questions when he's done. So, thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Mr. Cole, welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. On behalf of the Oakland Housing... On behalf of the Oakland Housing Board of Directors, I'm pleased to introduce our nonprofit housing organization to the mayor and city council. I'm joined in the back of the room by three of our board members, President Jeffrey Hochman, Secretary Lawrence Turner, and our newest member and also member of our construction committee, Kate Baker. I'm here to discuss this site right here. We hope to build a market-rate housing project on the property. This property is located west of Ferndale High School. There you see the ball fields. And as Derek mentioned, it's commonly referred to and used as the DPW Storage Yard. So after our presentation, we would ask that council and the mayor approve the letter of intent, which would give us 180 days to perform our due diligence on the site and to work out conditions between our organization and the city. Within that 180-day period, we think we can work with the city and get these various issues settled well early on into the process. I'm going to now provide an historical perspective of Oakland Housing, outline our mission, accomplishments, and plans for the future. We feel that we have a very good story to tell. I'll get into it. This is our founder, Senator James Cousins. The organization was founded back in 1935. James, I think many of you know, was one of the founders of Ford Motor Company. After he left that company, he became a very notable philanthropist, supported many charitable causes that assisted children and also the average working family. And although Henry Ford seems to get all the credit for it, it was James Cousins who came up with the idea of the $5 a day wage for the working man, which many say began the creation of the middle class. And it is the middle class that we serve with our housing programs. We provide homes for individuals who are in the middle-income sector. Middle income is defined as incomes that fall between 80% and 120% of area median income. We serve our clientele by building new homes for them. We also provide the end financing for the home buyer. So we're quite unique in that we are the developer on the front end and the financier on the back end. Our mission would call for us to build in a concentrated fashion so that we are able to create greater stability with a cluster of homes as opposed to an infill approach. This is what we propose to do on the site over by the high school. This is a map of our various projects in Oakland County, concentrated to the north of the county. We also currently, I'll get into it later, have activity going on in Detroit. Let me first start with our, a description of our very first project, West Acres in West Bloomfield Township. The project was started in 1936. It was a self-contained project, had a clubhouse, library, community newspaper. Today, that development continues to go on strong. We, in fact, participated in their 75-year anniversary back in 2011. And there are many third-generation families living there now. West Acres is renowned throughout, literally, the state as a very unique self-contained housing development, if any of you are familiar with it. Example of some of the homes and some early literature. Many of the homes are, look very modern. Originally, when they were built, they were built out of cinder block. And as you can see, I'll go back there. Creates quite a community-type environment there. And that is what we feel all of our projects do. We fast forward now to the Rivers Edge subdivision in Pontiac. We built 57 homes there, starting in 1989, moving through 1998. As you can see, they're very modern homes. Rivers Edge represented a true transformation of the neighborhood. It was a totally downtrodden area, west of Woodward, south of Orchard Lake Road. And the, we took this underserved, underutilized area, turned it into modern homes. Were able to provide homes for our clientele and as well serve the community by putting that land back into productive use and putting it back on the tax rolls. Couple of the modern homes there. These are two homes we want to emphasize how when we become involved with the neighborhood, we just don't build homes and leave. We stay there to support our development. These two homes had fallen into foreclosure. We repurchased them, rehabilitated them, and resold them before they would fall into greater disrepair and pull-down property values in the rest of the subdivision. We take care of our developments. We're also very proud of how we participate in community projects. This was a collaboration with the Clinton River Watershed Council and the City of Pontiac Schools, where ninth-grade science class went out to property that we maintain on the site and conducted studies of water quality in the Clinton River. We move now to Corktown Housing, which is our Detroit branch, a subsidiary of Oakland This is an example of the type of homes we want to build and plan to build in Woodbridge Estates. As you can see, these are very, very top-end homes. We are in a collaboration with the developer there. You may, for a landmark, many of you may be familiar with the old Jeffries West housing projects that were just to the west of the Lodge Freeway. This is what they became, totally transformed that area and put what was otherwise a totally decrepit area and has made it a fine development. And we're proud to be participating with the Slavic Development Company with this Here's an idea of the, some of the interior amenities, very much a market-rate product. This is land that we own in North Corktown and hope to one day develop. You can see a couple of familiar landmarks there, the train station for one. We are located this, west of the Motor City Casino. We're on the north side of the Fisher Freeway and north of the Service Drive there. Right now, as we wait to develop the land or put homes on the land, we're trying to once again contribute to the betterment of the community. We planted a tree farm there in collaboration with the Greening of Detroit. These trees are tended by a resident forester, who is a City of Detroit forester. He tends the trees and transplants them throughout the neighborhood at no cost to any of the residents. We do this to contribute to the community spirit of our neighborhood. Just another view here, we go and we created planter boxes. You can see wood chip house. We've really tried to make it a, quite a visually impressive and, more than that, a functional development, contributing to the betterment of North Corktown. We also support other nonprofits, small nonprofits in the area. This is Spalding Court, where one of the very energetic residents of North Corktown stepped in three years ago or so, and rather than having this development bulldoze, he has taken upon himself to try and salvage it. We have given him some help with his effort to try to put it into productive use as well. Below that, you see the Detroit Youth Hospital, and we have contributed also to that organization. If ever you want to get a great feel for how outside travelers feel about Detroit, go on TripAdvisor or Yelp and read stories about their experience there in the Detroit Youth Hospital and how the people within that hostel serve as guides and take visitors around the city and really leaves them with a positive impression. So, when we engage the neighborhood, we demonstrated that we take unproductive areas and put them back into use with our homes. The homes contribute to the property tax base of the community, property values around our development increase, and of course, you have the economic impact of more households spending their dollars within the neighborhood. Try and move faster here through this. Here's a roster of our board members. I've already introduced three of them, but there are two others I want to point out. We have, I'll start here, Frank Cousins Jr. Frank is the grandson of James Cousins, now a 90-year-old member of our board. We're very proud that he still participates. And then we have here Reverend Chris Yaw, who is the great-grandson of James Cousins. So we keep the family connection going. And here is just the quick idea that was drawn up as to how a development might look there. But the eventual shape and configuration will be something that we will give to the architects and civil engineers to figure out. In conclusion, we would ask that you would support the letter of intent, and we do know that there is concern out in the community that perhaps we build something less than market-rate housing, and I want to address those concerns by saying, first of all, our mission is a 501(c)(4) to service the 80% to 120% AMI sector of household income, means that we do not benefit from any HUD money. And HUD-type programs and developers service the median income group of 80% and below. We are, or below 80%, we are 80% to 120%. Our product is a market-rate product. It is not what some might stereotypically think of as cheap housing. Thank you very much, Tom, for your time and...
Thank you. Stick around, we may have questions for you, but appreciate the presentation. At this point, is there anyone in the, in the audience who would like to address council on this issue? I thought you might. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Wilkac. I live at 1615 West Marshall. We're talking about my backyard. I guess first of all, I feel a little bit blindsided that this has been discussed and whatnot for several months, and the neighbors haven't even been a little bit privy to it. So that's a little bit of my concern. I do have a lot of other concerns. I mean, I have a next-door neighbor that just moved in. One of the reasons he bought that property is because there was no neighbors behind him. One I bought in 1967. That's why I bought the property, because we had the city yard behind us. There have been issues with the city yard at different times, and the nice thing about that is that you can come to council meeting and say, hey, they've got this garbage back here, and calling city yard isn't doing any good. And I come to council and they say, oh, yeah, I see what you're talking about. And it's taken care of the next day. This is all something that we could have issues with. Let me check my notes a little bit, too. It's part of our privacy. It's really nice to not to have anybody behind you, and I don't know if, you know, I mean, I'm sure all people have had problems with neighbors behind them, and this is one, as I say, one of the reasons we moved to this particular location. I went all through Ferndale schools. I've lived in the Ferndale area all my life. My mother has too. So we do have a long history with the city. And I love it. I love the city of Ferndale, and I don't ever want to move. I have no reason to. I like my home. I like my neighbors and that sort of thing. Oops. I do have some other situations that we are concerned with. We know for a fact that there has been toxic waste that has varied very deep in that yard. We have been told that core samples won't tell you that. And this came from somebody who did it. So, his company did it, and he was some of that did put it there. We have some other issues, of course, of salt and stuff in the yard and other toxicities in there. Sewer vacs have been dumped back there, things like that. So I know there's going to be a lot of issues. I'm worried about the road, worried about the plumbing that's going to be going in there, the water and sewage lines, because I'm thinking of the east side. What happened when they did some construction over there in Woodward, and now there's flooding like crazy, and nobody can seem to understand why. I don't want to go through this. I really don't. I've been here, as I say, since 1967 in my home, and our neighbors all feel the same way. We found out about this in the paper yesterday, maybe, if you happen to get the paper. And so, in just, you know, a few hours, basically, we do have a lot of concerns. As I say, there's the toxic waste in there, there's the sewer vat dumpage, there's the other stuff. As for even the snow removal that's been put back there, you know it's got all sorts of oils and whatnot in there from being scraped up from parking lots. Our own privacy, our safety. So we do have a lot of issues on this, and I know you'll probably be addressing them, but we would like to be included instead of just being saying, hey, you're getting this whether you like it or not. We don't like that feeling. It's a very uncomfortable feeling. I guess that's about... We were talking about the median income of the area. Was that including only Ferndale? Or would it include adjoining properties which would also be in Royal Oak Township? And that could make a big difference.
Good question. I'll ask him to address it when he comes back, yeah.
And let's see what else. We can be able to retain our fence. We happen to like our big, tall fence. And I guess that's about it for now, but I'm sure that we will have a lot of questions in the, in the future, too, because as I say, we've just had a very short time to even digest this at all.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks. And just on the point of resident notification, I would just say that this is the very beginning of the process. I mean, we may have had conversations with these folks to get to this point, but this is day one in our mind. If we were to approve this project, this is day one, and there would be a robust period of time in the next six months to talk to residents, address concerns, try to address concerns or not. So I just, you know, we haven't, certainly haven't deliberately not communicated. This is sort of day one of the communications. So, just make that point. But anyone else from the, the community that would like to address council on this issue? All right, if not, I think council, I would ask, if council has any questions or comments about this, and I'm seeing Councilman Martin nod, yes?
Sure. Could, um, could we get clarification about the selection process for those that, I understand the criteria of, of median income, 80 to 120 percent? criteria of median income, 80% to 120% of the median income in the area and as part of this, maybe you could address Joanne's concern about how if that's just Ferndale or if you included Royal Oak Township in that calculation?
Well, there is a table that HUD puts out and there is a region for this part of southeast Michigan. It includes Warren, Livonia and Detroit. You get to it by using the HUD Data User Service and it's an approximate range. Well, the 80% to 120% is also based on the size of household, but it's a rough range. On the low end, a household of two, 80% area median income might be $36,000. Then for 120% AMI for a household of six would come to about $90,000. So it's scaled by household size.
So the other piece in the literature and then I guess it's the specificity around this is that your clientele are folks who are in that median income range but would not be able to purchase a house on their own? Is that correct otherwise?
Well, they may have difficulty. I'm not saying it would be impossible for them to obtain a mortgage, but historically our mission was to assist the first-time home buyer, so they did not have credit. They would have difficulty approaching a conventional lender. That's where we would come in, where otherwise they would be turned down by the conventional lender.
And I think this is more for Derek. As part of this process over the next six months, I'm assuming there's some kind of environmental component that addresses some of the issues that have been brought up here about the nature of the property?
Yes, the very first component. If this, and that's really what we're here is if this is approved tonight, we start that process immediately along with the Public Outreach and Planning Commission process, which does include public outreach, public hearings, and the Planning Commission is really the board that addresses residents' concerns related to design. We are aware of some of what's been said about the environmental. Part of the reason, you know, we'd like to undertake this is even without this project, those issues may be out there and we can use potentially some type of development like this to help resolve some of those issues. Certainly if there's contamination above a level that will support residential development, then this is going to become, you know, extinct in short, very, very short order, I would guess, but we're cautiously optimistic that once we get started, we will be able to use a development like this, a single-family development, maybe to help remediate any existing contamination that's out there now and not allow it to exist in perpetuity.
Okay. And for the, in this process, when we get to the public hearing component, there's some alternative notification to the neighborhood and the residents, right? We'll do mailings and?
Absolutely. And by law, what we're contemplating is similar to some of the other projects we've talked about, which would be more of a planned unit development project because there is city-owned property in it. That is a public hearing process by law. Residents are noticed. It does require public hearings at the Planning Commission and City Council. That process is established in the ordinance and everybody within 300 feet at a minimum gets noticed as part of that process. And certainly we will notice the neighbors as soon as there is a, any time this project is on the agenda, whether required to or not, and we'll let them have the opportunity to come and hear the discussion at the Planning Commission as well.
Yeah, I would encourage us to go above the minimum though, I think, where we've been most effective at it in the last few years, for example, was around the residential parking zone where we went door-to-door and invited folks and council can certainly help you do that and walk the neighborhoods to make sure people are notified.
Absolutely. That is, it's one of the pieces as staff that because of more of a partnership and looking at the development, because they are a nonprofit, because we are contemplating the planned unit development process, we have more opportunities to do just that as opposed to just reviewing a standard development with a private developer. We think this affords us an opportunity to do a lot more than would be the basic minimum and certainly Oakland Housing has agreed to participate in that process from the beginning.
Okay. And then my last comment would be indicative of conversation that we had at last council meeting about a different project too is, I know six months isn't a long time to do this kind of thing, but I'm always a fan of benchmarks and not that it has to be in the letter of intent, but it'd be good to understand along the process, like you said, the first thing we do is go out and look at the environmental. What does that look like and what are those, and you didn't have to respond to this today, but you know, what are those things that, what's a pass and what's a no-go? You know what I mean?
Understood.
And what four or five key metrics are that we'd want to watch or track?
Understood.
Cool. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Councilwoman Piana.
I just wanted to reiterate again what Dan said. I said it at the, for the downtown development project is the public participation plan that goes above and beyond the public notices and that is something that the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program sort of promotes and we're going through an assessment right now, so I think that puts us in the right direction. I was wondering though, can you sort of answer why it's been almost 20 years since you've actually developed to actually build some homes based off of your, it says phase three was, the last one was in 1997 that you've actually built a home?
Well, we have been trying. We have been trying. In the, since 1998, we had a phase four. We were trying to work out with the city of Pontiac. That didn't come to pass. Then we, there was an effort to do some housing along with Habitat for Humanity down in Detroit. That did not come to pass. We then, with the acquisition of the property in Detroit in North Corktown, we had two housing projects on the boards, one for a townhome project, one for single-family home development and we do still hope to have single-family home development there one day soon. But then came the housing bubble and so everyone's housing plans were dashed, including ours. But you do see where we're now active in Woodbridge Estates and we hope activity picks up there.
And related to that, so I think I hear you saying that the Corktown-Woodbridge Estates project might happen quickly or whatever that timeframe is. Do you have the capacity to do both at the same time?
Yes.
Other questions, Councilwoman?
Well, I'm on the Planning Commission and I know we have zoning regulations that don't allow drivable suburban with your garage in the front type of homes. Instead it's porch in the front versus your garage in the front facing the street. So the design elements are very much a concern and interest of the Planning Commission as well as myself, making sure that development fits the community. And I know Derek is responsible for making sure that sort of happens, but that's based off of some of your product housing that you've done in the past. I know you're doing some very unique things down in Corktown with traditional-type housing development versus the suburban-styled housing. So I, we're very interested in making sure that it fits our community because it's a connector development between Ferndale and Royal Oak Township and it has a lot of capacity just to bridge the two communities versus a patch of dirt.
That's certainly what we hope to do.
I do, for the city, I am interested in learning as we go forward and we've talked about it before, but what is the cost to the city to relocate their dirt and services that we may rely on where we hold stuff there and what is the cost to the city as part of this sale? And I know you'll go through that as we progress.
I could say Lloyd's biting his tongue as he's looking at me here. Yeah, we're certainly aware we have to at least replace a certain portion of this.
It's interesting that since the article came out, the number one question I get is, well, what are you going to do with the stuff in the yard now? And I said, well, we don't know yet. If Lloyd had said thumbs down, there's nowhere else to put anything, we probably wouldn't have proceeded, but he thinks that there may be a way. So that's, Lloyd, if I'm quoting you right, that we have six months to figure that out, but we think that's doable, right? Okay.
But the spring activity is very popular where they come and fill up their trucks with that dirt. So I've got a lot of concern about where you're going to put it, yeah?
I have a couple of questions. Maybe broadly, why Ferndale? I mean, this isn't a dilapidated town. This isn't, you know, a blighted area that needs to be refurbished. So what is, what was it about Ferndale that attracted your outfit?
First, it was Kate Baker.
Well, there is that.
Then also Keegan Mahoney, a former Ferndale resident is on our board and we all know that Ferndale is a fine community, very supportive, rather than throwing up roadblocks as one encounters in Detroit. So that is what drew us to this city.
Okay. A couple of questions. So you talk about these being quality developments and they certainly looked at from the presentation. Who are your builders or how do you select them?
Well, we would have to put this out for bid.
Yeah, okay.
We're very fortunate to have on our board two very successful developers. One is a principal with Slavic Development, that being John Frasco, and the other is a name some of you may be familiar with, Ron Cooley of Corktown fame, Slow's Development, but Ron is a former developer himself and home builder.
Okay. Good. Your answer?
I'm going to ask an answer, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments or questions? I guess I don't have any.
I do have one other correction to the LOI. I noticed on item 13, it has 14 days for a purchase agreement. That was under a previous version we had been working under. That should be modified to indicate that the purchase agreement will be done after the due diligence is done to both parties, seller and purchaser satisfaction.
So let me, just to be clear, so this currently says purchaser shall prepare and draft a proposed purchase agreement for review and discussion within 14 days from the date of acceptance of this letter of intent by seller and you want to, you want to change that to-
Yeah, I'd like to have that changed because we have not done the environmental yet to indicate that that'll be prepared at the end of the due diligence to the satisfac, basically to satisfaction of both the seller and the purchaser, if that's acceptable to Dan.
Purchase show, purchase agreement for review and discussion at a date acceptable to the city and?
Upon completion of the appropriate due diligence.
All right.
Your Honor, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Derek, I had made this comment about nine confidentiality and I suggest deleting that. Is there any reason we want the letter of intent to be confidential?
No, I, both parties have agreed to strike that as part of the final agreement.
Thank you. Strike nine confidentiality.
Confidentiality is not really necessary at this point, I don't think anymore.
In fact, if anything, we want transparency.
Yes, all this is a matter of the public record at this point.
Actually, if I may, it leads me to another question. It's thought of, have we gotten any other offers for this property?
No.
Okay. So they're not beating on the doors?
No, in fact, this is one of the properties we've, at different times sought opinions from developers about the best way to go about doing something with. It was kind of a council's direction to investigate what we are able to do with city properties and if any are developable within the parameters of the city's master and manager's plan and zoning ordinance, and this is one of the ones we identified.
We did discover, by the way, that the, there's a drain easement in this property and how do you think, to all this of Derek, how do you think that potentially impacts what we can develop there?
Significantly reduces it. The Blue Hatch South area, the 12-tons drain bisects the property almost directly through the middle. We have met with Jim Nash and his staff from the Water Resource Commissioner's office, talked about the easements necessary to maintain access to the drain and at this point, we're all confident that there's enough property left to do a development that would be feasible and fits within the city's guidelines. It does however, and this goes to some of the comments that were made earlier, certainly preserves a significant amount of the property on the northern side as green space, which I think is reflective. Almost all of any potential development will be exclusively along the Republic frontage, maybe a couple of exceptions, but it still preserves a large area of open space.
Would that green space be open to walk on or would it be blocked off? I mean-
That's most likely to do, based on what the Planning Commission wants, I would say. I'd say that'd be one of the points for discussion for them going forward. We've talked about doing different stormwater treatments, whether it be recharge or other things, but I think those are all part of the discussions that would go forward from this point, but certainly possible.
As well as I would think if that drains do for any major maintenance that while we're ripping the place up, maybe that's the time to do it?
Yes. We spoke with the Water Resource Commissioner. It's a large pipe. The potential for them to actually open up the ground to repair it is almost non-existent. What they do is drill down and almost connect a ladder down to it to go down and do the repairs from the inside. They don't foresee any need to ever open the ground there.
Other comments or questions? Otherwise a motion would be in order.
I'll move the City Council approve and authorize the mayor, city attorney and staff to finalize and execute the letter of intent with Oakland Housing.
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any last comments or questions? Welcome to Ferndale. We look forward to negotiating a possible development with you.
Much look forward to it, Deb. Thank you.
Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item B is the consideration of mid-year budget adjustment. And April, are you going to do that?
As you know, in April of each year, we approve a budget for the following, actually two years' worth of budget for the following fiscal year, for the following two fiscal years, and we often do what's called a mid-year adjustment to modify any expenditures and revenues that might change. What you have before you is the mid-year adjustments for fiscal year 2014 and a friendly reminder that we do have on Saturday the budget hearing for, budget workshop for fiscal year 15 and 16 here in the chambers, and I'll talk about that more in call to action, but for now we're just focusing on what we consider some mid-year adjustments that we want to make. For, starting with just some, as you know, when we do mid-year adjustments, we don't necessarily go through as in detail as we do when we do the normal budget hearings, so, or budget workshops, I should say. So we just focus on some big-ticket items. Obviously with an $18 million budget, things change. So a couple of things that we can focus on in a revenue stream of things. One of the, as you recall during the budget process last year, we had planned on a certain budget number for taxable value and were caught off guard by significant, a rate that was significantly less than we were told by Oakland County. So we modified that. We also had some significant properties that were going to the Michigan Tax Tribunal that we also budgeted for a major loss in, but when all came said and, when it was all said and done, we were pleasantly surprised that what we had budgeted for the Michigan Tax Tribunal was much higher than what came, what it came back as it relates to a loss. We were able to increase our revenue overall by $400,000 this current fiscal year. However, that was negated by typically as part of Mirmah, we get a settlement check each year and it was about $130,000 less than we've been receiving that we've been trending. So that is one particular item that has no rhyme or reason for what that revenue brings in, so we can't really budget for it. So we had just trended the last few years and we were off. And then we have another year where we're going to have a few unrealized gains for the loss of the market and we lost about $200,000 for that. So overall, in general, revenue, we stayed neutral, but then in expenditures, we did have some big adjustments in the expenditure side of things regarding the budget and we can, you know, have time for questions and I also Karen here as well. A big project or a big part of some of the expenditures that we addressed for this current fiscal year that were a part of the budget process and some of them after the budget process was the West Nine Mile project that we agreed to pull from fund balance for our match. We all had discussed and council agreed that the match received for the grant was too significant to turn away for that project. The other thing that we did throughout the year, we did approve originally the budget with six months of the four firefighters that were part of the SAFER grant and then in January, we modified that for the next six months as well. So you'll note the adjustments there. You will note in there that the change wasn't as, it didn't equal $176,000 because we had two firefighters that are leaving, one already left in January or in December and one is leaving end of this month and between their salaries, you have to remember too that a lot of, the majority of the costs for that actually comes from their fringes and so you will notice that the fringes were a little less as well because a big part of that is OPEB, which is the retiree healthcare. That doesn't matter how many firefighters you have, it all gets dispersed, it has to be paid for, so it offset a little bit to not equal the exact amount. We could talk more about that if you have further questions. And then another significant change for mid-year is that, as you know, that the Affordability Act has put a lot of requirements on to organizations, not just cities, but private companies as well, and has forced us to relook at some of the positions that we have that were pretty full-time, they were on a full-time basis without benefits and the affordability- they were on a full-time basis without benefits. And the Affordability Care Act does require that. So, there's a certain number of hours that you have to, if anybody works over, you either have to give them benefits, or reduce their hours, or risk a penalty. And we did an analysis on a few of the positions that we had that were full-time, and tried to make a determination on whether we could lower their hours to provide health care, and felt that for the three positions that we noted, that it was in our best interest to provide health care for them, rather than try to have two people doing the job, or four people doing a job at part-time wages. Those three positions include the two code enforcement officers, who we've had a lot of turnover over the course of the last couple of years, just due to the fact that people are finding full-time employment in other places. And we hope that that will help us be consistent in that nature. And then, the special events director as well is a full-time position, and often, in particular in the summer, more than full-time. So, we ask that that position also follow the Affordability Act requirement and create a benefit package for that person as well. So, those are the three major changes. The rest, as you can see throughout, the budget were minimal, or based on trend, or just normal course of business adjustments. So, I open that up for questions. Most of our staff is here, as well as Karen Meyer, our Director of Finance, to answer any questions that you might have on mid-year adjustments.
Thank you. Other questions of April or staff?
Two of the firefighters have left, April?
Yes.
So, there are only four under the SAFER grant right now?
Or two.
Two.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd inquired on this earlier, but I do think it's a significant adjustment. There's an additional $117,000 for ADA ramp construction. Can we talk about that expansion?
Sure can. I'm going to have Lloyd speak on that, please, our Director of Public Works.
It's just too big a number to address, I think.
The additional $117,000, when we reviewed, you know, why that was over, it's actually a number of factors. One is that, right from the very beginning, there was a budget adjustment made prior to approval by council that caused the amount to go, and it was not our current finance director, but caused the amount to be budgeted $50,000 less. The original engineering estimate for the ADA work that was going to be necessary in that year's sidewalk district was $200,000, but it showed in the budget as $150,000. So, there was $50,000 of it. In addition to that, some of the work, according to the engineer, if we had included the ADA work along Libranoyes in the MDOT contract, the cost to the city would have been as much as 50% more to do it under the contract because of the additional testing requirements and engineering requirements. So, that work was pulled ahead. It would have, had to have been done. We were trying to put it in a potential grant in a couple of years, but it caused, because we were awarded the grant for the complete streets, it caused that work to be pulled ahead, and the additional cost there was incurred as well. That cost for all of the ramps along Libranoyes, not just the complete streets, ended up being $75,000. And so, those costs are actually spread between two line items, but it's, you know, it shows as $117,000 over, as you indicated.
Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Maybe just because I am not an accountant, and I don't understand what this means, but the net realized gains, $200,000 loss, but it says, "Don't worry, it'll be recovered in future years."
I'm going to give this one a kiss.
Not that I don't trust you, but could you explain that, please?
So, the net unrealized gain is actually due to some changes in investments made with the pooled cash account that happened, and was actually realized in 2013. Not realized, but recognized as an issue in 2013. So, what happened was your pooled cash account was invested in some very safe investments, but they're over the course of a long period of time. So, the market value changes every year, every month. So, it happens to be that we're budgeting a $200,000 unrealized loss. So, as you see, you see it as an unrealized gain, but it's actually the opposite. You'll see it as a negative number.
Right.
You will see that spread across the various funds because it is pooled cash account. So, it is shared amongst all the funds, but the general funds portion is $200,000.
Oh.
You will see that come back once your investments mature. So, you don't actually lose anything.
How long till it matures, do you?
I do believe we're, I think we're split between, it's not, they're not short-term investments, they are long-term investments.
But it, based on change in market value, but the market has been incredible the last year, so how do...
The type of investments that you have are, I think, a lot of municipal bonds.
Municipal bonds, which was the one part of the market that was terrible. Okay.
Karen, if I'm not mistaken, we did a huge pool transfer with the OPEB, when we moved to an OPEB trust, that's where a lot of that came from, is when we moved all of that money to the trust. It, we had particular investments that were not mature yet, were causing that loss. So, we're just catching up from that. I don't think, starting next year, probably not going to see that as much anymore. It'll be much less, if you want to understand.
And let's make sure that it's not OPEB funds. It was originally intended as OPEB funds, but it is pooled cash account.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Other questions?
While I'm standing here.
All right. I think we're good. A motion would be in order, then.
I move to adopt changes to the fiscal year ending 2014 budget to comply with Section 17 of PA 621, the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, direct any budget surplus we transfer to the Public Improvement Fund.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Any final comments or questions?
Yes. Our budget will look different come April, May, right?
Correct.
So, can you kind of give a little preview of what to expect?
You can. Just, this is a general reminder to the public as well, that they are encouraged to attend from 8 to, 2 to 3-ish on Saturday here in the chambers. We will be holding our budget workshop. Typically, we do it over a course of a few nights, but we're going to try it on Saturday for kind of a one-day event, one and done, if you will. But we have been working really hard to redo the budget in a way that, I guess you could say is more transparent or user-friendly. What we're trying to do is move toward what is often referred to as priority-based budgeting, which allows not only city council and staff, but the general public to understand more of how we budget, and what that means, and what that looks like. We have made some significant changes that we'll be walking council through on Saturday. In particular, some items that were, for instance, fringe benefits is one that we had a conversation about a lot. It's a very large amount of money that sat in one pocket, and we were able to pull that out to be able to help, not only, again, our department heads and council, but the public, understand what that is. So, you'll see a lot of those particular changes that is meant to help with transparency. It's helped to move our budget forward in the future, to allow us to look at that priority-based budgeting process, which allows you to really drill down to what programs cost and what exactly that we do in the city. I think sometimes that the budget can be so confusing for not only general public, but city council, because it's in such municipal speak, if you will. And our goal is to really try to create a budget that everybody can understand and talk about, and not be confused about, and things of that nature. I think it's a trend that's moving along a lot of communities. We want to be part of that trend. But this year will be the foundation for that process. So, this is something you can't, with a huge budget, such as we have, it's hard to do in one year. So, we're starting the basis for that on Saturday, and hope to continue to mold that into something that is a living document, if you will, and a much better story of what we do here in government. So, we hope that you find Saturday to be very informative, and the general public as well, and know that as we move forward, we're going to, every year, build upon that and make it even more, even more accessible and understandable by the general public.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No. Looking forward to Saturday.
Sure. Saturday, 8:00 AM.
This Saturday?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Here in the chambers.
Jill doing the presentation?
No.
8:00 AM, did you say?
Yes. 8:00 AM to about 2:00.
Lots of coffee. All right, Sherlyn.
Lots of coffee.
For what?
I asked if he was doing the presentation.
It was moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Council members, Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to item C, the consideration to adopt ordinance number 1152, amending chapter 13, Parks and Recreation, Article III, Parks and Recreation Board of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances. April, you want to introduce that?
I will. Unfortunately, Councilmember Pollock could not be here tonight to introduce this item. Again, we are trying to, or I should say, Councilmember Pollock, as well as the supportive council, tried to revitalize the Parks and Rec Commission. And with that, it was time to take a look at the ordinance, to make sure that it met our needs. And then, for the most part, that it did. We didn't want to modify. We're starting to become a little more consistent with our commissions. And two major changes we made to the ordinance were to allow the flexibility of a number of people to avoid the problem of not having quorums. So, what we've done is very similar to the FESC, which was that we allow no less than five members and up to seven. Therefore, as we start recruiting, or if people leave, we can still have quorums so that they can actually do some work. And I do see that this commission is going to be very active over the course of these next few years. And the other significant change, or I guess I shouldn't say significant, but notable change, is that we made the liaison, staff liaison language consistent, again, with the FESC. The original ordinance was a little more, very, it was very difficult to maneuver. It was, it had staff being part of the board, but not voting members, and things of that nature. So, we wanted, again, make that more consistent with the FESC, that says that the city manager authorizes or determines who's going to be the staff liaison for that board and commission, and allows us that, what's the word I'm looking for, discretion to be able to pick who that, who the liaison is. And right now, for this next year, actually, Jill and Lloyd are co-chairing that commission. So, those are the two changes that were made that were significant enough to bring back to change and adjust by resolution.
Great. And unfortunately, Councilman Pollock is not feeling well, but he really championed this, and has taken the lead on this park group. So, kudos to him, and hope he feels better soon. Any discussion or comments on this?
Just that, I think we were, again, we're, this is the second of the commissions that we're addressing with the ordinance. And I only have one question, and this is sort of in line with the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission, ordinance updates that we approved last year about minutes that the Parks and Rec Commission is still, has to follow the Public Meetings Act with the Open Meetings Act, and that's not in the ordinance listed. I didn't read it in there, but it is in the FESC one. There's an actual clause under the FESC one, but not in the Parks and Rec. And so, if we're trying to keep consistency...
For purposes of consistency, that could be added, but certainly, any public body that is created by this council is subject to the Open Meetings Act anyway.
That's my understanding, that it's not just implied, but it's required.
Whether it's expressly articulated or not, but Councilwoman Piana's point is well taken. From the standpoint of consistency, that is something that could be amended to incorporate that as an additional provision. One other change that the city manager didn't note, but I think is important, this draft also, as proposed, provides that the members to be appointed to the commission are to be appointed by the mayor, subject to the approval of council.
And then, my other question is, who's required for taking the minutes of the commission? Because this was an issue at FESC, and I don't see that addressed in here either.
The elected secretary.
They point their own, don't they?
And they did.
They point, yeah.
I believe it's Jill.
She's raising her hand. I think Jill got volunteered for that job.
Well, one of the challenges was that we had non-city staff taking minutes, and they wouldn't get distributed, or were not available to the public for review in a timely manner. And so, I wanted to make sure that that issue was addressed.
It has been, yes.
Other comments or questions? Motion would be in order.
It would move that we approve ordinance 1152, amending chapter 13, Parks and Recreation, Article III, Parks and Recreation Board, sections 13-30 through 13-32.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Lennon. Further discussion? If not, Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now, moving on to regular agenda, item D, which was added for purposes of an engagement letter with the city of Ferndale. And April or Dan, who's going to introduce that item? Dan?
Dan is.
I'd be happy to, Your Honor. Before you, this evening is a proposed retainer agreement, essentially, that has been submitted by Miller Canfield. As councils are aware, there was a lawsuit that was filed against the city with respect to a headney challenge asserting violations with respect to the water and sewer system of the city of Ferndale. Miller Canfield is a, as most of the council knows, a large law firm in the state of Michigan, has a particular expertise with respect to sewer rate issues, and has litigated this similar type of matter in the City of Jackson case. And so, before you, this evening is a proposed retainer agreement on that issue. I would just add that the city manager has had an opportunity to speak with the proposed point counsel, Ms. Sony Mathani, this afternoon. I'm, and is supportive of this proposed matter.
Thank you. Councilman Lennon?
Yes. Oh, I read this, and this is fine by me, but I think we had previously discussed about partnering up with some other jurisdictions that are also being sued over the same issue that never came to...
If I could address that, this particular firm is handling the defense of a similar suit.
Okay.
With respect to the, you know, an adjacent municipality. The cases are not consolidated at this point, and it's not clear whether they would be consolidated, but the issues, and the issues of the lawsuits are identical.
So, we have to move, and we have to move quick on this and retain these. Okay.
And, I mean, just for the edification of the public, I mean, this is a, this lawsuit, Larry Wolf versus City of Ferndale, is a pretty, we're being sued for a significant amount of money. Remind me what it is. Fifteen?
It's not specifically quantified, but it's in the millions of dollars.
In the millions of dollar range. It is, although we expect to defend it vigorously, we have to take a lawsuit like that very seriously, and we will. And this is no reflection on the great counsel that we get from Dan Chris, but this is a potentially very significant amount of money, and a very technical area of law, I imagine. And so, hence the need for outside special counsel. So, I support this agreement. Other comments or questions?
It's the right direction to go in, so.
All right. A motion would be in order.
I'm looking for one.
I've got one here. A move that we approve Miller Canfield, a special counsel to defend the city in Wolfville, Ferndale, water and sewer system litigation.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Further discussion? If not, Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The item is adopted. Next order of business would be call to council. I see our police chief in the back, Chief Collins, anything for the good of the city this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing. All right. Derek, anything else from economic development this evening?
Nothing.
All right. Jenny, anything from the HR perspective tonight? Nothing. Jill, anything else from the Parks and Recreation area?
Other side.
All right. Mayor Chief Sullivan. I know we had at least one incident recently.
Can I just...
Mr. Mayor through the chair.
If someone was to have a grease fire in their house, what type of instruments, short of a sprinkler system, should be readily available?
A fire extinguisher, dry chem for grease fires would be a really good item to have handily available. As Councilman Lennon said, we did have a couple of fires, one this weekend, and one early this morning. The more concern I have is the one early this morning, was set by a six-year-old playing with lighters. with lighters. We used to have an ad campaign through the National Fire Protection Association of a thing called Strike Zone, which is pretty much where an adult has to reach up to put things like lighters, matches, and other fire implementation candles and such. And I would recommend that people go through that. This is probably a child experimenting with the curiosity of fire, but the fire moved quick, almost trapped him in his room. Luckily, the smoke detector is directly outside his room, and the family all made it out. This could have been a tragedy, and so that reminds us all to check those smoke detectors, typically when we spring forward, and the time, or the fall back is a good time, not to check your smoke detector battery, but just put a new one in it. It's worth the investment of two batteries a year for each smoke detector, and if you can, put one in the bedroom, and outside of the bedroom, and bedroom doors are for fire safety and preventing smoke travel, and not for privacy, although you may use them for privacy, but close them at night to prevent the smoke from moving from one room to the other, to compartmentalize the fire.
Short of chem dry, are there fire extinguishers out there that do double duty, where they can be used for...
Yes, you can get ABC, or B and C extinguishers that work in the kitchen. They also have new products out that are foam, so you don't get the mess, because dry powder makes quite a mess, too. Although so does the smoke and everything else.
Flames and everything else melts, yeah.
That's it.
But we're glad everything worked out at your place, Mike.
What a great, the firefighter is unbelievable. Who can I thank you?
That's a good news.
And the police department was...
Nobody hurt. Everybody made it out of all fires, nobody injured, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Chief. Mayor, anything from the DPW this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's no surprise to anyone that we had a pretty difficult winter, but now that weather appears to finally be breaking, we're still experiencing a number of water main breaks as the ground thaws and heaves. But in addition to that, we're also experiencing some infrastructure that is suffering from the severe thaw and frost that we've had over the winter. Catch basins are collapsing, sidewalks are heaving, pavers are moving, and so we just encourage business owners, which we are receiving reports, and homeowners, residents, to report it to the DPW, and we will respond to ensure that, you know, that a possible sinkhole isn't developing, or some other dangerous situation. And the number to call would be the DPW offices at 248-546-2519.
Real quick, have you thought about experimenting with that new pothole filler, part gravel, part adhesive, part tar?
Yeah, that's actually been around for some time, and there are trucks that are mobile, and there is some expense involved in that, but certainly that is something we can look at.
Mayor, question about potholes, if it's not expanding to the full size of a sinkhole or whatever, they're popping up all over. Are you just eventually going to get around to them all, or do you want residents to call you over a standard?
Crews have been out every day.
Yeah.
And so more than likely, we will, but if there's been one that has been, you know, plaguing a car, or has caused significant damage, you know, we certainly would like to know about it, and we'll try to respond within 24 hours.
Excellent, thank you. Karen, I skipped you, but anything from the finance area this evening? Appreciate, yeah. You're getting ready for Saturday, right? All right. Joe, anything from the chief innovation officer this evening?
The city will be launching a responsive version of the city website, www.ferndalemi.gov. The site will be down Wednesday evening, 8:00, over the early part of the evening, while we make the full transition to our responsive mobile site. So we are one of the first municipal websites in Oakland County to have a responsive site, so this means you'll have a great mobile version as you use your tablet or a smartphone to access our website.
Excellent, look forward to that. Sherlyn, anything from the clerk's office?
Well, just want to add to what Lloyd said, we have had a rough winter, but spring is just around the corner, as evidenced by the fact that my office is now processing Sidewalk Cafe applications.
Spring cannot be far after that.
That's correct.
April, anything else from the city manager's office?
Just a friendly reminder that the budget hearing is open to the general public, and we do encourage folks to attend. It will be here in the chambers, starting at 8:00 AM, and we are shooting between 2:00 and 3:00 to be completed.
Very good. Dan, anything else from a legal perspective? All right. Mayor Potem, Martin, anything from you this evening?
Just a couple things. We are in the middle of the grant cycle for the Ferndale Community Foundation. Grant applications are available on the website at www.ferndalecommunityfoundation.org. So if you are involved with a local or area nonprofit, please check that out. Deadline is mid-April. This Thursday, there's another very cool event going on in Ferndale, supporting Michigan AIDS Coalition. It is bizarre, bizarre, and what this is, is an unusual item silent auction. It is at Orkut, and it goes between 6:30 and 9:30 PM. There is a $10 cover at the door, and there's a cash bar and appetizers as well. But if you are interested in, at Orkut.
Where?
Yeah. So if you're interested in checking out some bizarre things that are bizarre, please join us. It's a great cause, a great local charity. And lastly, as Christina mentioned, Clean the Ferndale Up, the Ferndale Community Foundation sponsoring that, May 17. There is a Facebook page with information, and we'll shortly have registration information. It's from 9:00 AM to noon on the 17th. We've had great turnouts for that year after year, so hopefully that will continue to be the same. So please like the page on Facebook, and more information to follow. That's it.
Excellent. Councilman Lennon?
I'm sure you're going to mention State of the City, so I have nothing.
All right. Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, can I throw pie again in Matt Nwatsik's face, and you can throw pie at Martin's face?
Happy to do it again, sir.
I can't speak for Matt, I do it, or anybody else who wants to.
I have no comments tonight, other than that one.
All right, and I do have just a couple, yes. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday, March 25, is the State of the City address at the Rust Belt Market, so it'll be fun to do it in a new venue. The speech itself is at 7:00 PM, and all are invited for no charge. If you want to come early and meet our city staff, and meet people from the chamber, and members of the community, you can do that from 5:30 to just before 7:00, and there is a $15 charge that the chamber collects for that. But I look forward to doing the State of the City tomorrow at 7:00 at the Rust Belt Market. I also want to mention some really good news in the health arena, and that is that our very own Judge Joe Longo returned to work last week. It wasn't widely known in the community that he was gone, because he's a private guy, and he didn't want us talking too much about it, but Judge Longo really did face some life-threatening illnesses over the fall and early part of this year, and it was a tough road, but he is back, and we are very fortunate to have Judge Joe back in his courtroom, and so all is now right with the world. Welcome back, Judge Joe.